Ready?
So, really? I saw some.
Okay.
I didn't, was there others?
There.
Yes. Apparently, Bob got too excited about it, but he talked him as, as we negotiate.
Yeah.
Not renegotiate, but make sure we're in for the next year.
Yeah.
And he mentioned that he'd like to have Jeff Martin.
Okay.
And Bob said, why Jeff Martin never comes, never shoots us. Well, I don't know, because you've got two choices. You can reserve a time and if Jeff's not available, which is pretty much always.
Okay.
Or you can invite him and see how it plays out. Turns out, it was never really.
All right. You all sat?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's quite all right.
He had talked to Jeff Martin with some Israeli dinner.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome you to the April 18th City Council meeting. We'll now call this meeting to order. If you would like to address the City Council either on items on the agenda, not on the agenda, excuse me, which will be early in the agenda process, or on the agenda at the appropriate time, please fill out our forms located to your left as you come through the doors and hand it to our city clerk, please, the city on my far left. When, if and when you do speak, for all of us, please speak into the microphone so all can hear us, and I would like to ask you to either turn off or silence all your electronic devices. With that, please join with me the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we love you and we thank you for the many blessings you have given us, our lives, our families, our friends, this great nation, and our beloved city of Temple Terrace. Help us in our limited capabilities to truly appreciate all you do for us. There is so much strife in this world. Help us to spread peace and love in place of hatred and vindication. Let us love one another as you love us. We pray you will guide the City Council and staff to do what is right in your eyes and best to serve our residents. We honor you and live for you. We pray for peace, we pray for love, and we pray in your name. Amen. All right. The first item on our agenda is Presentation, Vision Zero. So, welcome.
Thank you. This is really short. It's almost just an announcement.
Please.
I'm Gina Torres, and I'm with the Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organization. And you may remember back in October, our executive director, Beth Alden, had come and you were one of the first jurisdictions to sign the Vision Zero Resolution. So, thank you for that. So, we've done quite a few things since then. I just want to give you, catch you up to date, and then I have a request. I've got Cherry already on board here. So, we've had two of four workshops in developing the Vision Zero Action Plan, and it builds off of all the great work that local people are doing. I mean, we are, Vision Zero is trying to get our traffic fatalities to nothing. We have a serious problem here in our community, and there's a lot of great work already underway. And we've probably saved lots of lives with all that work that law enforcement does and all of the agencies and hospitals are teaching kids in schools, and we're just doing a lot of work out there. Public works are making complete streets. But we have a lot of more work to do, and we want to elevate that, that good work that's being done. So, Vision Zero is more of a movement. It's, we need the whole community to be involved. We focused the action plan on four areas. One is called Consistent and Fair, and it's about enforcement and really getting the community enforcement to work together in different ways. We have another called One Message, Many Voices. Obviously, that's our outreach, and we're working now to develop strategies that we're all saying the same thing and using data to, to talk about this issue and these problems and all saying the same message. The Future Will Not Be Like The Past is another track that's looking at changing design standards. So, it's easier to make things safer on our roadways and easier to implement. And then the last one is called Paint Saves Lives, and these are these kind of pop-up engineering treatments, low cost that we can do that can have a really great impact, and we can do those around town and different roadways, maybe not on a really large roadway like Bush that has a lot of traffic, but these other roadways in our neighborhoods. The second workshop that we had was in January, and Captain Pridemore was there. That was in Town and Country. We had demonstrated what we meant by that consistent and fair action track and went out and did a walking audit of Hanley and Hillsborough, just to give an idea of what enforcement issues are out there. And then we broke out into our sessions, and we had some ideas on strategies. Well, our third workshop is scheduled for April 25th, so it's a week from tonight, and it's scheduled at the Temple Terrace Presbyterian Church at 420 Bullard Parkway. And the idea there is to demonstrate what we mean by Paint Saves Lives. So, half of the workshop is going to be an exercise, and we got this idea, I'll tell you more about it, but we got this idea because also in October, we offered a couple different projects we would work on at the MPO. One of those is the Bullard Parkway Complete Street. So, we had a public meeting, and I, I am going to point you out, Councilman Ross, had some really great ideas, because one of the issues on Bullard Parkway to make it safer for cycling and walking is the bridge really constricts, the bike lane gets really narrow there. So, one of the ideas that came up was painting it green. This is happening in other cities, and Tampa City Tampa has some green bike lanes. So, we thought, well, we're going to do a Vision Zero demonstration. Let's do it on this roadway. We've managed to get, it is non-toxic, it is temporary paint, it washes away. We're going to narrow the outside lane just a half a foot. It's eleven and a half feet or more, and we're going to use that extra lane to have a little bit wider bike lane and get out there on April 25th. From nine to 10, we'll do the painting exercise, and we'll go back to the church and look over the draft action plan, because we've already drafted the plan now. So, I have, I saw that there was a flyer out on the board. I don't know if Mike wants to put this one up. If you, you're welcome to, it's just another announcement. We've got students at USF. I'm getting nervous, because as soon as, we're going to finish that road. I don't care if I'm by myself painting it, so we have to get that out there. And it seems like a really short bridge until, you know, when you're driving on it, until you get out there and kind of like walking. So, anyway, I just wanted to make that. And thank you for being such leaders with the Vision Zero Resolution and being part of the Bullard Parkway Complete Streets project. So, if you have any questions about that, I hope, I know some of you have committed to coming out there, so I look forward to seeing you next week.
I would have brought a bucket of paint and paintbrushes tonight and headed them out, but we appreciate all that you do for us. Are there any questions or comments by the council?
And I enjoyed the bike ride.
We come to thank you.
The bike, your previous bike ride and the bike ride with the mayor was really fun.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. All right. Next on the agenda are approval minutes of April 4th. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Second. Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Mine, I think it's page 10, not PDF page 10, but page 10 on the printed version. About, let me get there, about halfway down, paragraph that starts out says, "Councilmember Ross believes the council was already on board with this endeavor." We're talking about the Boys and Girls Club. He says, "He asked to make a friendly amendment to Councilmember Donahue's motion. Said he believes the city is in a good financial position to make a single commitment." And that's not what I, it's either not what I said or not what I meant to say, because I don't think the city's in a good, the city is not in a good financial position to make a single commitment. And my request that was Mrs. Donahue amended was to look both in the current fiscal year as well as the next fiscal year. And I, when I read that paragraph, it's not, doesn't, that doesn't come through to me anyway. So, other than that, that's my only comment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments with those additional corrections? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So, do you have a recommendation on how you would like us to read?
To say not.
So, add the word not?
Well, that, that would be a good start, add the word not.
All right, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. So, as amended, are there any other questions or comments?
No.
If not, all those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right. We have persons wishing to be heard on items on the agenda. Annette, are you? Ms. Rennie, please. Good evening. Name and address, please.
Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. My comments on what Mr. Chalura already said, I was on vacation and I saw it on my iPad on LoopNet considering redevelopment. I was shocked. Doesn't that have to come before council and the citizens, before you can put that out in the street? I know if I take a listing, it has to be signed and all the details written. So, how did that get on there? I was looking for another person for a small commercial property, and I saw that, and too late, two days later, it's gone, but it already makes us look crazy. This redevelopment has gone on and on, and now we're going into another phase, and we're making gross mistakes already. So, we've got to really look at this, control it, and make sure it's right, and especially when you're putting a listing in. Frank's right. You don't put, you don't disclose the price. I'm just shocked. I hope you all take a look at this and present it and consider it and not just let it fly again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other person that wishes to address the council items on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Hang on a second. Right behind you, then you can be next.
On the agenda, right.
Name and address, please. Three minutes.
No, not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on the agenda, sir.
Anne Marie Nikter, 904 Drew Hills Road, Temple Terrace, Florida, City Council and Mayor. I just wanted to, I guess, give a kudos to the Water Department, public, I guess not public works, but Water Department and the Billing Department. I had not had my water bill in my house read for like four months, and you can imagine, I was working with people there, especially with Irma, and there was a really nice gentleman from the Water Department that came and replaced my meter twice, and I won't go into all the detail, but they were very professional. They worked with me, I worked with them, and I got my water bill the other day, and I didn't faint and I didn't fall over. They looked at what it read with the new meter and what it was with the old meter, and it was definitely not what you would expect as far as a huge impact on my water bill, and I just wanted to say thank you. I talked to Irma today and I thanked her over the phone, but I just wanted to put it on record that they were very, very good to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else for comments on items not on the agenda? Okay. The next item on the agenda is a resolution opposing the adoption of legislation infringing on home rule. City Manager Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last City Council meeting, there was some discussion about the, the actions of the current legislation in order to impose a threat to our home rule. City Council directed staff to, to draft a resolution for adoption so that we can deliver to the governor and the legislature supposing any proposed bills that threaten our home rule. That has been attached to this agenda for your approval. If I can mention that the week prior to this, we did, we crafted a letter that went out immediately the next day. So, this is in conjunction with council's request to craft that resolution.
Thank you, sir. Is there any council discussion? I would like to make one note. I attended the six-month Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development Corporation meeting today for a couple hours. Just to let you know, it is not going to notice by very large corporations of the, what's going on in the state of Florida. And I heard one say they had 38 areas they're looking at across the nation, and it's not going to take very much for them to go elsewhere with the apparent attitude and the actions of this legislature. So, I can't emphasize enough for you the, the need for us to stand our ground and maintain our home rule as well as the economic incentives that we need. We're talking about that for redevelopment. I think we're going to have to talk about it, as you said, Mr. Ross, for outside redevelopment if the legislature goes awry as they seem to be going. So, I just cannot tell you enough how important this is and urge your adoption of resolution, and again, affirm it's not going on deaf ears. Thank you. So, do we have a motion for the resolution?
Move to approve the resolution as drafted.
We have a motion second. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. We now have a permit application and rules for the Fourth of July celebration event. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The attached application and set of rules that are attached to the agenda is a result of last year's Fourth of July parade that provided some unexpected participants, if you would, that were described in council as bothersome. In response to that surprise, council at the time, which is different than currently exists, asked after to address this matter prior to the Fourth of July for 2017. We have tried to do that and provide the city with a mechanism to avoid some further embarrassing moments with participants by crafting the, a new application with a set of rules that is attached to that application to allow the city a little bit more monitoring, if you would, of people that want to participate in the Fourth of July parade. The application requires that applicants participate, that contribute, that participate in the parade, contribute somewhat of a show value of the parade, requires all the entries to specifically stick to the theme and the spirit, and without question, the intent of a Fourth of July parade, which is nothing less than the United States, American independence and American patriotism. The application requires that the applicants explain in detail their entry so that we can determine whether or not they're going to comply with that, again, intent of the parade and the activity of the parade. The application is reviewed by a committee of three, being the chamber, city staff that help stage the, the participants of the parade as well as the city manager, and the application that doesn't possess all those three approvals doesn't get staged as a parade. The item is up for discussion. This is a, this is a shot at, at coming up with something that we feel is, is something that we can hold our feet to and try to help monitor people in the parade and participants in the parade. You know, with that, certainly, this is our first stab at this. The, the essence, if you would, of the application and the rules that are attached to the application literally come from other entities and other cities that have done this. This is not something that we came up with. We've taken this information from 10 to 12 different cities around the country, not just in Florida, that have dealt with this same problem. So, with that, I'm open for, again, some, some review of this application and some guidance in order to get this thing going so that we have something to work off of this coming Fourth of July.
Thank you, sir. Before we have council discussion, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this item? Hi.
Ellen Snelling, 521 Lantern Circle. I've lived here for about 15 years. I just want to say I really enjoy the Fourth of July parade. I've been coming to it for as long as I've been here, and I've also been participating in a couple of different groups in the parade itself. But there has been one thing in particular that has really bothered me the last two years, and I would assume, you know, may try to come back this year, but it seems like, as Mr. Stevenson had said, it should be things related to the Fourth of July that are patriotic, and other parades have specific guidelines. They don't just allow any, anything goes type of thing. And I think in the past, it really hasn't been a problem, so there was no reason to really have strict rules. But since things are starting to happen and you don't know what's going to happen next year, but I, specifically, as many of you know, it's just the idea of a 10-foot smoking blunt going down our streets again, since it is a family-oriented parade and we have a lot of children watching, I just think the idea of really an illegal drug with smoke coming out of it in our parade isn't my idea of Independence Day. So, I think this is great, you know, something to look at to, to go forward and to try to limit the, the people in the parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this item? Okay, if not, council discussion.
Go ahead.
Ms. Donahue.
I, being, being against rules and regulations for the Fourth of July parade is like being against mother and apple pie. You know, you, you have to take this with a grain of salt. I, I read through the new regulations, and I, I think we have to be very careful that we do not go down a slippery slope here. You have to remember, Fourth of Jul, Fourth of July celebration is a celebration of our freedoms. It's not just the celebration of signing the Declaration of Independence. It, it represents all of us, meaning free speech. I totally agree that a smoking anything, I mean, that you can't advertise cigarettes on television. So, if they're not allowed on television, they obviously should not be allowed in our parade. However, I would really like for us tonight to not vote to approve this until we have all taken this apart piece by piece. And let me just tell you one particular thing. It says here, "入試者為主，請考慮政治或社會觀點，或商業廣告用途，請勿參與" shall not be allowed to participate. Okay, well, I don't know. Let's start naming them. Chick-fil-A, Tico, Pinch a Penny. I mean, I can probably give you a list of about, I don't know, I'd say 75% of the parade is composed of our businesses who, yes, you know, I, if they put red and white, red, white, and blue bunting on the side of their truck, I guess that makes them patriotic. Okay? And they are patriotic. They're, they're part of our community and they're part of the, and they are participating, and so that line is, is cumbersome to me, because it says a lot more than what we need for it to say. So, I, I know that you went through, Mr. Stevenson, and looked, did some research and, and got them from other cities, but that one is especially worrisome to me considering that the bulk of our parade are the businesses that we support, and they support us by being in the parade. It also says to me that if I were to say, well, if you put some bunting on the side of it, you, you're approved, well, then why wouldn't the offending group not, again, not the smoking cigarette or blunt? I, I, I think that we, we're, we're making too much of what should be simple rules. Supporting family values, fun family event, I mean, all those things that are said here are obviously appropriate. But, you know, to, for me, to say that, you know, religious, I mean, there's none of the religious groups that are coming in here, it says here, "shall not use for political, religious, social issues, or targeting special interest groups." Well, last year, when they were in the parade, they were trying to get our vote. So, they were campaigning. Okay? Well, guess what? They won. So, now they're illegal, you know, we're, we're all dancing around who this one group is, but believe me, when I was with the chamber, there were others that were equally offensive because I disagree with this plot or you disagree with that, and there are always people who said, you shouldn't let those people be in the parade. And these are, you know, groups that, I mean, there are people who don't believe in religion at all, and should we pull them out because we, we do? So, I, I don't want to argue a specific, I'm just saying, I think while it's a good idea for us to put in regulations, we have to be very careful that, that this document, I believe this document, as we are looking at it tonight, is way too restrictive and puts way too many things in place that could, could cause us problems. So, I, I would urge my fellow councilmen to, to send this back for a rereading or just a little more tweaking so that we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. You know, if, if we can't do anything political next year during the election year, it'll be a really short parade. And, 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 you know, we, we like all of that, right? We, we like having the politicians show up and throw beads and wave and, and all that good stuff. I mean, it's just, it's just part of every parade. So, those are my comments. As I said in the beginning, I am not against regulation. I am against, that was offensive. I totally agree, but I think there's a middle ground here that we can reach without this over-restrictive regulation.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Pagorich?
Thank you. Cherry, you're going to, it's a good thing you're sitting down, because that was one of the things I was going to talk about as well. I, I, I agree with you to some extent, but I think it's an easy fix. I mean, I, I think you can change "shall not" to "may," "may not." Okay? And you can change the last sentence, that the parade committee reserves the right to prohibit entry into parade to any applicant, period. Take out the whole, doesn't meet requirements. I think, you know, it's, it's our parade, we can let people in that we want. The other thing I would suggest that we add our, our mayor to the review committee. I think he is important enough to have a say in on this. He is the mayor after all, but I, I agree with you. I think we can make some slight tweaks to that, that, because you're right, we, we have churches that enter, Chick-fil-A is in there, Gas Bars is in there, and, you know, other than the red, white, and blue and some music, it's not exactly independently themed, even though they are both independently owned and operated. Okay? So, so I, so I agree with you, but I, and I think, but I do think that, that the review committee needs to have the last say, and I think that, you know, it's our parade, that they have the last say, and that's the end of it. But then I would suggest to, to council that we add the mayor as a, another review party to this, and I don't want to make it unmanageable, but it's the mayor, for God's sake. He should, he should have a say in on this.
You ready to hand the volunteer yet? No, not yet. I, I knew better. I, I found that out when I volunteered in the Army. Mr. Ross?
Well, I have a question and then a comment. My, my question is, is the chamber been part of this process of promulgating these rules? Is the chamber on board with this?
The chamber, we met with the chamber last week and shared this with them and asked them for comment.
Okay. So, they're, they're, all right, with the intent of this. I'm assuming you're not saying otherwise, so that, that would be okay. I'd just like to say, I'm also want to make sure that our language is as clean as it can be and past legal muster. We have to be very careful with this kind of thing. While there is a First Amendment right, that right is not absolute. There are restrictions on your right, freedom of expression. You can't yell "fire" in a loud theater. You can't, you know, there's certain restrictions on that. Nobody, or at least I don't think anybody here, has the intent of restricting protected speech from, that we're trying to take that away from these people or anybody else, but this is a family-themed event, and there are restrictions. We, we should put restrictions on this event. That doesn't mean that they don't enjoy their First Amendment right to go down to the corner and hold up and advocate for legal reform and do the, you know, there's all kinds of legally protected speech and expression that they can engage in, and nobody's trying to infringe upon that, but this is our small-town parade, and I do think that we have an obligation to the community to, to, to have some common sense rules in place. So, I don't disagree. If there's better language, we could select. I think Mr. Pagorich is right. We probably could make some changes and clean this up a little bit, but I am adamantly in favor of the intent of this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ross?
And I'm going to agree. I mean, really, it stemmed out of the one float last year with the smoking blunt, which still, regardless of the vote that was passed by amendment earlier this year, is still federally illegal. So, that was really an easy fix. We could eliminate that at any time. This just gives, working with the chamber, kind of guidelines that says we have the final say, and I think it is just a couple of minor, small tweaks, so we don't get into whole people blowing this up into a giant big First Amendment issue. It's just whether it's "may" or "may not," or "may not be considered," and I agree, the final, we're the final arbiters, the three people or four people, whoever. So, I agree with the intent, a couple of minor changes. I think it's all it really needs.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Because I, I do not believe the chamber is fully supportive of all this language, I would like to make a motion at this time. I move to postpone the decision on this until it goes back to the committee for, for making those changes and to make the changes that we've mentioned tonight and perhaps others. Do I need to give you a date certain? In that, if I do, I'll give it to you for the next council meeting.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion? Hang on one second. Is there a second to the motion?
I, I'll second the motion just so we could discuss. I don't think it's really necessary. I think it's just giving direction to staff to me, if, if it's necessary to second it to do it, but I don't think it's necessary. I think it just can be redirected back to staff to... I think it just can be redirected back to staff to clarify the items we've been talking about, to come back with the final product between the chamber and staff and bring it to us. I don't even think it needs a motion. I didn't think if we adopted it, it would probably need a motion.
Exactly.
But if we're just saying, “Come back to staff, come back with us with everything we've recommended,” you know, so if it needs that to go to that, I'll second it. But if we can just do it with redirection, then there's no point doing it.
I, I, I suggest, Ms. Donahue, given, given what we've heard, that withdrawing the
motion would be appropriate and simple direction to staff, just for staff to work with, uh, my office in the chamber to, to modify the, the document, to clarify, clarify certain issues. Well, one issue that I'll, uh, mention to you is the language that, uh, Mr. Pogorich, you indicated, uh, taking out who does not meet these requirements out of the, uh, regulations. That would be something that may open up the door to a so-called unfettered discretion argument. So I would recommend leaving that in there so that there's standards by which the committee has to apply the, the applications to. But, um, I certainly think that, uh, Mr. Stevenson and myself, along with whomever at the chamber, can, uh, work a little bit to, uh, perhaps, uh, clarify and hone this.
I'll be happy to rescind the motion. I just wanted to make sure we did not pass this, this evening.
Oh, okay, then, from what I'm hearing, then, there's direction of council to the city manager and staff to, uh, proceed with the, uh, suggested changes and any other they, deemed warranted upon review by the, uh, city staff and chamber and come back, uh, when you're ready to, uh, re-present it. Am I on track with that?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we next have the city manager report. I'm sorry, I hope that wasn't Freudian or something, but actually, I don't have it in my agenda, so, uh, council business, or I missed it. I beg your pardon.
It's okay.
Council business.
I do have a comment. I, I just want to, um, thank, uh, let's see, is Carl here? Yes. Last Thursday, which was two days before the Arden Blanc event, oh, I guess it was two Thursdays ago, seems like it was just yesterday, a large tree, two trees actually, fell in Woodmont Park and the work crew came out immediately. They cleaned up the area, they made sure that it was safe, they took away any hint of a tree that could be dangerous at the event and, uh, and, uh, really appreciate that. And, uh, Mr. Langfield, I'd really like for you to let your crew know how, how important that was to us and how greatly appreciated it was. It was fun watching them, too. It was amazing how they could do that with a little chainsaw and it took down this great big tree. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Charles, if you could address this in the, in your city manager report, I'll, I'll stop, but I would like to have everybody understand that where we are with the, uh, RFP, uh, dealing with going in, going out to get possible in-house counsel versus our present arrangement.
Uh, Mr. Pogorich, I was going to mention, but I'll just, I'll let you know, it is on the tentative agenda to be presented to you on, uh, May 2nd agenda. Um, I've got all the information, I just need to put it in a form that would be, make sense to everybody.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other, it's Ross?
Two things. I assume you're probably going to give us an update on the condemnation hearing that took place, so you don't have to answer now if you're, assuming that you are. If you're not.
I, no, I'm just, we, we will.
Okay.
Yes.
The other thing I was wondering is if, if we could, and I apologize for not giving you a heads up on this, is can we get a status update on the code enforcement amnesty program? Are you getting any takers on that? Has anybody applied to take advantage of that program? I'm sorry to catch you off guard, I, I didn't think about that until...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, so far, we've received approximately eight to ten applications somewhere in that neighborhood, because some are coming to me, some are going to, uh, the city clerk's office. Uh, we will be meeting, uh, on Thursday to go over, uh, all the applications that have come in. Uh, there has been some interest generated, though, uh, from the program and, uh, a lot of feedback. Uh, we've also, uh, come across a couple of situations where, uh, property owners have actually purchased, uh, and the, what they've reported to us, they, they unknowingly bought into a $200,000 lien. But anyways, what, uh, the, the good part about that particular case was that they've, they've already repaired the property and, uh, except for some painting, the property a hundred percent improvement. And you all may be familiar with it, it's over on 113th Avenue and 64th Street. So neighbors are very happy about that one.
Oh, they're very happy. I, I, I had a call from a resident who just gushed over the work and how quickly it had happened, once it started.
Yes, ma'am. They, extremely aggressive approach to, to repairing the property, very good. But I, I will, uh, I think at your next council meeting, I'll be able to give you a, uh, more detailed information about the, how the applications are going.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
I have one more.
Yes, Conley?
Yes, I, I sent a message to city manager this afternoon. Um, there's an issue, an ongoing issue on Hibiscus Drive. And, um, I'd like to, I know that I cannot get involved in this, I just want everybody to know, I'm not getting involved in this, but I'd like to know how we go about setting up a meeting with the neighbors and the police department and the code. This involves a pack of dogs and, uh, a renter who appears to be abusing the rental code and, uh, neighbors are rallying. So how do I ask for that meeting? Can I ask for that tonight, or?
You did when you broke me the email.
Okay, all right.
We'll take care of it. We'll kind of set up a meeting. We've done this before, this is a, this is a continuing problem.
I know.
I've met with that neighborhood on a Sunday afternoon, as a matter of fact, several months ago. I don't know that it's a pack of dogs, I know there's two. I don't know if that constitutes a pack.
Apparently, they're up to five.
I don't need them to make it bigger than what it is. One of the problems that we have is that we have not witnessed the dogs loose. So it's one of those, dog matters are just as bad, uh, as chickens.
Well, I'll send you, I'll be, I'll make sure you have all the emails that, that I have, so...
Yeah, we're, we're well aware of the situation. I know that PD is keeping an eye on it, I know that code is keeping an eye on it. Uh, there hasn't been sufficient evidence for us to move forward with it, but we'll meet with the homeowners again. Uh, the homeowners certainly know me, most of them, um, know me intimately. I don't know why they're not picking up the phone and calling us for some resolution, but we'll address it.
Okay, thank you.
So noted.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll follow up with a, with a, uh, status report to, to council.
Okay, and one more question?
Yes, sir.
Where are we with Mr. Woodall and the pond?
Um, that is part of my, uh, city manager's report. I can tell you that, uh, we shared a letter with, uh, with council last week that went out to the residents. All four of them, um, were mailed that, uh, that form letter individually addressed to each one. Uh, we've received certified mailings back on three of them. Uh, we have not received anything back on the fourth, uh, and we have not received any information that we've asked for in that letter. So, uh, we'll follow up with it. We'll kind of, again, try to do our best to resolve that matter. One of the things that we've discussed is it may be difficult to move forward with it if we don't get four people agreeing to this. Um, one of the things that is going to be very problematic is, and may not make any sense, is if we've got these four slivers of land and we've got three people that are interested in doing it. We'll have to evaluate whether or not we want to take the three. May not do any good to take the three, so...
I'll reserve comment.
Well, I, I, I would, I would like to hear your comment. I mean...
Well, what was it, 12 years ago this started? And at that time, I mean, they, they had a pond that they were maintaining. And then, you know, they agreed that the city could take it over because SWF MUD indicated that that was required. So it, I realize that there are complications, but once it was brought to us, I mean, it just seems to me that if our customers are our citizens, then somehow we need to make this happen so that they're happy. It could be that the fourth one is on vacation. I mean, I, I, you know, who knows?
Well, and they were sent the same letter requesting certain information. We'll, we'll certainly pursue it and find out if they're considering doing it.
I mean, you know, they have offered, if you let them in, they'll clean it up. Because right now, two of the neighbors tell me, we are, apparently, we still own this. So let us go in there and clean it up to our satisfaction and then, and then while you're still doing it, I mean, uh, that's how adamant they are about this being cleaned up. And, and I can kind of understand their, their thinking there, you know? They're having to look at grass growing up their fence and when they can't get back there to mow it, they can't do anything about it.
I've had some conversation with, um, some of the parties and it's not as simple as somebody being gone.
I know.
I'm afraid it's much more legalistic than that. But I would, I, you know, that's, the city manager and I have discussed it and he's proceeding. And I think overall, um, at least seventy-five percent are very happy.
I hope so.
The last one may not be so and may not be willing to work together, but I also suggested, for what it's worth, that, uh, at some point, if we need to, the city manager will meet with, uh, property owners on site, all of them. Maybe we'll peer pressure or something would help.
Yeah, oh, good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other council business?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, and you just precluded my apologizing to the council for overlooking them, so, but thank you. All right, Mr. Stevenson, I could hardly wait for your report.
You pretty much have got it. Uh, one other, one other item that, a couple of the items, uh, just a reminder that Thursday we have our town hall meeting at Orange River Estates Clubhouse. Mr. Pogorich indicated that he wouldn't be able to be there, but it starts at seven o'clock, seven to nine. We look forward to, uh, comments out of, out of the neighborhood down there. We've had a request that came in to Mr. Dunn yesterday, uh, to work with, um, one of the instructors over at USF, uh, that teaches sign language, uh, to incorporate some of their students into some of our meetings here. Uh, if council is, I, I don't know a lot of details, but if council is willing to have that audience, we'd be more than happy to try to accommodate them. If you're okay with that, we'll make some arrangements. So if you see somebody in the, in the corner, you know, signing, you know what it's about. So if you're on board with that, we'll, we'll make arrangements, we'll make some contacts, we'll let you know what the, what the program is and, um, how long they, they anticipate doing this. Uh, we're not, we're not, we don't have a lot of details as of yet, but I didn't want to pursue any details unless council was on board with that. So, um, with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Conley, uh, to give us an update on the Urbanscheck hearing that we had, uh, yesterday. And, uh, it's all yours.
Mayor, members of city council, we had the hearing before, uh, the city's special magistrate, Rich McIntyre, on Monday. Mr. Urbanscheck did not, uh, did not appear. Um, the city went on and put on its case in chief, including, uh, documents and certain testimony to, uh, establish that the criteria in the code for condemnation, uh, do in fact exist. Mr. McIntyre will be entering an order, uh, upholding the condemnation order. Um, we expect that that will be entered sometime, uh, either later this, later this week or next week. Um, at that point in time, Mr. Urbanscheck will have thirty days to appeal that decision to the circuit court. If he does appeal, well, then we'll have to take action in the circuit court. If he does not appeal, then the order becomes final and, uh, at that point in time, the city can proceed to execute on the order. Um, under the, the city's condemnation code, the, um... If the property owner fails to demolish, the, uh, building official may take whatever action is reasonably necessary, including obtaining quotes and recommending to the city council the hiring of a contractor to, to demolish the structure at the expense of the property owner. So that I would expect that that would be something that would coming, be coming before you as an agenda item in the near future, so...
Mr. Pogorich, a question, if I may. If I remember correctly, this is the second appeal that he didn't show up for?
That's correct.
Okay, so is there anything, and I realize some of this is just beating a dead horse, but he's, uh, he's probably going to appeal again, okay? Because he's got thirty days to appeal that decision that, that the magistrate brings down. At, is there a point at which he has to pay for our legal fees and all that other stuff? I mean, because how many times can you appeal something, not show up, wait for the decision, then just appeal the decision and then not show up and then wait for the decision and appeal the decision? How long does this go on?
Well, it, it can't go on that long. I mean, it, it, at this point, his appeal to the, uh, to the circuit court is something that, uh, frankly, I, I question whether or not he will be filing anything with the, uh, with the, uh, circuit court. Um, you know, he, you know, this is a gentleman who's homeless, who has a two and a half million dollar tax lien, um, and has, uh, a very large code enforcement lien. So as far as, we did not draft the condemnation code with a mechanism that it provided for prevailing party attorney's fees in it. Um, you know, that's something that, uh, I don't believe is in any condemnation code and, um, uh, really what we're talking about doing is demolishing somebody's, uh, somebody's home or structure. Um, at, at this point in time, um, with the ruling from Mr. McIntyre, uh, which, you know, I, I would expect with no appeal will become final within the next forty-five days or so, um, the city will be in, city will be in shape to go forward and, and demolish the structure.
Let's assume worst-case scenario that after we get the magistrate's decision, he does appeal to the Ninth Circuit Court, you said?
No, he'd be, uh, he'd be, uh, appealing to the local Thirteenth Judicial Circuit.
Okay, and that, let's assume he does that, okay? And then we go to the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit and he doesn't show up and we win again. Does, can he appeal that decision?
I guess technically he could appeal the, a decision of the circuit court to the Second DCA. Yes, he could.
Where's it stop?
It stops with our judicial system and procedural due process when you're taking away somebody's property rights. I mean, um, our, our process is, is really no different than the processes that other jurisdictions have and it's set up so that, uh, it's difficult for a municipality to tear down somebody's house.
I get that and I'm not trying to, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, okay, after the Thirteenth District Court, can he, he can appeal that decision. And then where's, where does it go then?
Well, if it's not a, uh, if it's a, if it's not a question that deals with a particular issue, it wouldn't make its way to the Supreme Court. It would stop with the Second DCA.
Okay, so he's got two more appeals left in him.
He has potentially two more appeals left in him, yes.
Okay, so and we're looking at ninety days, a hundred and twenty days max?
Well, there's, there's, you know, when, when I had, uh, uh, the mayor asking me questions years ago, when we had the trial on the, uh, a matter involving Mr. Tozier, um, we waited for a year and a half to get back a decision from the court on that, so I can't tell you what the time period would be.
I appreciate that, but I, I'm asking because I know Mr. Congilio is watching.
No, the, the, you know, the time period, if, if he appealed it to, uh, the circuit court, we would push to get a, uh, a hearing before a circuit court judge as quickly as we could, so I suspect that we could likely get that within, uh, sixty days or so. Um, once you get to an appeal to the Second DCA, the time period is much longer because there's a briefing period, then the mayor may not allow for oral argument. So once you're at the Second DCA level, appeals can last for months and months and months.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
I have a question about the Bank of America's role in this. Do they, as a, as a stakeholder in this, do they have any right to protest this without his cooperation? Suppose that he doesn't appeal it?
No, they, they did have, you know, they, uh, under our code, they're required to, they're one of the parties that's required to receive notice. And, uh, as a result of that, we regularly communicated with Bank of America to advise them of, uh, both the condemnation and the appeal and, uh, the date of the hearing on the appeal. A couple of business days before the, uh, the hearing before, uh, the special magistrate, I received, uh, correspondence back from Bank of America advising that they would not be attending the appeal hearing and that they understood that, uh, the city could, could proceed forward to take action on the property, including demolishing the structure.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything else, Mr. Conley?
Yeah, just one more thing. Um, the, uh, matter involving Mr. Holland, we have a ruling from the Second DCA in the city's favor. We've filed a, a motion, uh, for, uh, for attorney's fees and we're, uh, before we go forward with that, because that can be an expensive process, we're obtaining information from the IRS, which has a tax lien on Mr. Holland's properties. And we're also, uh, going to be, uh, likely asking for a shade meeting in the not-too-distant future so we can just, uh, discuss attempting to resolve this matter, uh, you know, on all grounds.
Very good. Very good. Mr. Stevenson, anything else?
No, sir, Mr. Bear.
All right. Mr. Conley?
No, sir.
Any other business to come for the council? If not, we stand adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.